A little bit of technical difficulties, so thank you for we're hoping that those get resolved really fast.
Blame it on Microsoft.
Holiday music playing or something. Please just chill. Tell me what you do for work.
Basically program management now on aviation projects. Well, I work on Salt Lake here before we develop 10 hours. And then about a year and a half go a Swiss companies and.
All right, you guys.
Were you ever a big fan of the used? The band? Been a 25 year re- for.
Really?
I'm really excited because they're playing everywhere they go. They're staying for three nights.
City.
Album. Playing second night and then another album the third night.
You're going for all three nights?
My absolute favorite band. I don't know.
We are all set to go.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you for being patient and welcome to the Centreville City and Planning Commission. Today's date is Wednesday, December 11th, 2024. I am LaRae Patterson. I'm the vice chair and tonight I'm chairing this meeting. And in attendance, we have Commissioners Amanda Jorgensen, Lane Jenkins, and Matt Larson. And Mason Care and Sean Hoth and Tyler.
Tyler Moss.
Moss, that's right, are absent. So we're officially starting this meeting at, what, about 7:15? And Matt Larson will be giving us our spot and our opening prayer this evening.
Yeah, just a short one today. It's, uh, we don't want to hold up this meeting. It's already held up, so I won't give a speech. We, uh, are, uh, this is the holiday season, which most people look forward to and is a favorite time, not for all. Um, but I would just, uh, encourage us all to look at this as an opportunity. Every holiday season is an opportunity to, uh, meet and introduce to neighbors, new move-ins, uh, friends in our community around us in Centreville, and, uh, a chance to kind of break the ice on some common ground and, uh, and build them. And that can carry through a year, so, uh, that's my message. And I'll do a short prayer. Our Father and everyone, we're grateful to be gathered in this capacity as citizens, and that we can meet and discuss best interest of our community. And we ask that we may be able to focus on the, the city and, and one another and be able to discuss, resolve issues in an appropriate manner of peace. And we ask this blessing in Jesus' name.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we have another item prior to the zoning map amendment. So the first thing is, on the agenda, is the final site plan for the Oak Ridge Water Tank. And I would like to turn time over to the staff for that.
All right. So the agenda item one is the Oak Ridge Drive Water Tank. The applicant, which is the city of Centreville, is seeking approval for the final site plan for the property located at 1470 North Oak Ridge Drive, known as parcel 020070003. This is an existing public facility, high zoning district, located on the hillside within the hillside overlay zone. The city is proposing to establish a water storage tank in an electric building for the water tank. Conceptual site plan was approved on November 13th, 2024. The plan has not undergone any alterations from the conceptual site plan made, solidifying the final site plan for this project. The applicant will have no considerable alterations made. The code requirements review and the analysis, is the proposed amendment consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the general plan? Yes. In the application that, um, in the staff report, I have the reasonings behind it and I trust that the commission has read through those. Great. The second question is, the proposed project harmonious with the overall character of the existing development in the vicinity of the subject property? I also said yes, the subject property is surrounded by mostly single-family homes in rural community land, or county land. The proposed project would not change the low-density character of the area. Question three, what, to what extent is the proposed site plan adversely affect the adjacent property? I said minimal to nothing at all. And then number four, what is the adequacy of facilities and services intended for the subject property? All utility providers have verified that they serve, that they can serve this property. So based on this information, staff believe that the proposed project is consistent with the goals and objectives of the general plan. The site plan request complies with all city standards and zoning codes. So that follows with my staff report for the Oak Ridge Water Tank.
Be it. Okay, thank you. Does the commission have any questions for staff? I mean, we pretty heavily discussed it last time. It's remaining intact, no changes.
No questions.
No questions. Do we have applicant here to speak?
Mr. Carlson, Mike Carlson, Public Works Director.
Mike Carlson, please come.
Hi.
Hi.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
Well, I just wondered if you had anything to say.
No, I don't. It's, I think it's a great project for the city. It's going to enhance our water system, so I think it's a good deal. We get an extra half million gallons of storage for firefighting and things like that, so. And I think all in all, it's going to be a great project, especially when we re-landscape, we'll get more native plants on there. We have the Cottonwood Group helping us, as we explained before. So it's, I, to me, it's an exciting project, good career end for me, so I like it.
I guess I do have one question. When I was reading through the notes, I noticed that there was an end date for the invasive weeds and plants around there. What happens after that, after that group has been taking care of it? Then is it the city's responsibility?
Well, we're, yeah, basically, we're hoping that it'll pretty well be gone away. I mean, that we're taking care of it in the areas and that, so. You know, I mean, you're not going to be able to stop it all from coming back in, but, so anyway.
Okay, thank you.
So in other words, you're, you're hoping that the landscape, that the plant will be established by then and it won't require additional maintenance?
Yeah, we're going to spend approximately around $4,000 planting more native plants in the area. And that Joanna could be, more information on that. She's my ace in the hole for that one. But, uh, I'm excited to have a joint project with her. She's volunteered to come in, or that group has volunteered to come in. And I'd let her speak because she can answer all that stuff a lot better than I can.
Okay, please state your name.
Um, my name is Joanna Wilton. I'm the executive director with the Cottonwood Canyons Foundation. Uh, so the native plants that we've discussed are all native to this area. They do not require external watering other, after they're established. So we will water the first year, um, but the idea is that once they're established, they, they should, they should grow. Um, and then, um, as Mike mentioned, any of the seeding that will happen, those plants will be established by the three years. Um, the three-year term is what's usually required for an NEPA, so it's kind of an industry standard.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Do you have any further questions for them? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, any discussion that needs to happen on this?
I think we covered it.
Okay. All right, would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion, got it right here. I hereby make a motion for the planning commission to approve the final site plan for the property located at 1470 North Oak Ridge Drive, known as parcel 020070003, based on the following findings, one through three, with no amendment.
Okay, do we have a second?
Aye, second motion.
Okay. All right, let's take a vote, starting with you, Amanda.
Aye.
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 Okay, it's unanimously passed. All right, so the second agenda item for tonight is the zone map amendment for 535 South, 400 West, from AL agricultural low to RH residential high. On the agenda, it was in error written as RL, but that has been fixed. Okay, like to turn the time over to staff.
All right. So just a, um, just a explanation of what is going to be kind of following tonight. My name is Sydney Deweese and I'm the city planner for Centreville. And what is going to happen is that we are solely focusing on a rezone. We are not looking at what could potentially happen on the rezone. So let's say that the applicant wanted to put in housing units. That will be a completely separate application. So just strictly tonight, we are looking at the land use development for a rezone, which permits what can and cannot go on that property. So I just want to put that out there for everybody, um, to kind of acknowledge. So currently, this is an, this property located at 535 South, 400 West is zoned AL, that has a max density of two units per acre. And the applicant, Betty Jo Garlock, proposed the property to be rezoned to residential high, that has the max density of eight units per acre. But if they wanted to exceed that, they could have, they could apply for a conditional use permit granted up to 12 units per acre per CZZ 1221.O00. It gives for approval standards that should be considered with the reviewing of the zoning map amendment. These standards are whether the proposed zoning code or zoning map amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the general plan. Number two, whether the proposed zoning map amendment is harmonious with the overall character of the existing development in the vicinity of the subject property. And then number three, the extent to which the proposed zoning map amendments may adversely affect the adjacent property. And then number four, the extent to which the adequacy of facilities and services intended to serve the subject property, including but not limited to roadways, parks, and recreation facilities, police, fire protection, schools, stormwater drainage systems, water supplies, and wastewater refusal collections. In this staff report, I have answered the following questions. So going on to question one. Is the proposed amendment consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the general plan? No, the parcel in question is located within neighborhood two, as described in the city general plan, section 12, 480, subsection three. The property should be low-density, single-family residential. The rezone to residential high would exceed the planned density for this neighborhood. This development would not be aligned with the goals listed in the city general plan. Goal number one, establish appropriate land use patterns and land use transitions. Goal number two, preserve existing areas of semi-rural residential for current property owners. Goal three, preserve viability of the areas for the potential future development. Going on to question number two. Is the proposed zoning amendment harmonious with the overall character of the existing development in the vicinity of the subject property? No, the parcel in question has a density of two units per acre, as I have disclosed. The closest parcel to that is of the same proposed zoning. Residential high is 1,717 feet away to the southeast of the property. Question number three. What is the extent to which proposed amendment may adversely affect the adjacent property owner? This rezone would impact the adjacent property owners since, since posting this notice, 72 people have voted, have voiced their opinion that this rezone would adversely affect them. Proper planning practices indicate density allocation is not puzzled piece, but instead transition from lower to higher density continuously. The method of gradually increasing density is meant to preserve the nature of the neighborhood and allow for proper street design to meet the use and safety need of the neighborhood. I will note that the applicant did provide sketches from the developer on how this would match, this would, how they would in, how they would use natural landscape to act as a buffer between zones. Number four. What is the adequacy of facilities, services intended to serve on the subject property? So as I've said before, that this is strictly just a rezone, so the rezone of itself of the property would not immediately require additional services. But any future development on the property would necessitate a separate application during which the applicant would need to submit plans utilizing with connections for each individual unit. So in conclusion, after careful review and analysis, staff is not in support of the proposed rezone for the density increase to residential high. Such change would be inconsistent with the existing land use patterns and surrounding community character. However, were the applicant to reapply in the future, the current general plan does seem to support rezoning to residential low as it offers a more balanced transition and aligns better with the land-dwelling unit ratio. So that concludes my staff report and, um, I trust that the commissioners also read my staff report before and read over my, um, the details that I didn't just read out, so.
Include comments that came in from the public?
Absolutely, absolutely. I sent comments to all of them.
You read all of them.
Yes.
Fantastic. Everything that was sent has been read.
All 73.
Yes, yes. Okay, so does the commission have any questions for Sydney specific to what she just said? Nobody? Okay. All right, so now we are going to invite the applicant, Betty Jo Garlock, to speak. This, uh, where are you? Okay, this is your chance to add or to share anything based on the commentary from staff that they just presented. So please state your name and the city in which you live.
Um, Betty Jo Garlock and Centreville City.
Thank you.
So a couple of notes that I had on, um, so this property is on 400 West. It is considered neighborhood two. And the streets, uh, the streets to the neighborhood would not be impacted because there's not going to be any direct access other than Fourth West. The general plan states that they're a part of neighborhood two, but really, we should be observing it as part of 400 West. Uh, this is a high-traffic mixed-use road and how it has been. Uh, this street has run all the way down to Bountiful with heavy tra, heavy mixed use. We've got churches, Oak Ridge assisted, uh, assisted living, Bountiful Meadows, Country Springs Apartments, Country Springs condominiums, Florentine Town, as well as our shopping centers, uh, as well as many of the rural, um, orchards that have planted, you know, used their businesses on the road to sell produce. So this is not necessarily the neighborhood. And I'm asking city council to kind of see this property as part as Fourth West and not neighborhood two. Uh, another part is that this, you know, our community is very base, is, is very dependent on our neighboring cities like Farmington and Centreville for our education. All of our students go to Beaumont or Farmington High School, as well of, as well as all of our early learning Head Start and specialized programs. We are heavily part of Bountiful and Farmington communities. So this street has such a different mixed use, I'm asking them to not, to not look at it as part as, um, neighborhood two because we don't, we're not going to be accessing any of those neighborhoods or those homes. Um, I also want everyone to, a lot of the questions I've been getting from neighbors as well is, um, they're, I'm assuming that there's going to be apartments and condos. What I'm asking to, for a rezone for is for single-family, or sorry, multifamily as far as like townhomes that will be resold to families. Or two-car garage, you know, 17 to 2,400 square feet. Affordable housing for our community. What we don't have is affordable housing. All affordable housing is being pushed out. Um, you know, last city meeting, we just, you guys approved an extension of the condominium that are being built on the other side of the freeway in the industrial park. So without allowing more spot rezones in our community, we are not allowing for growth that people can own or occupy. We only have these one to three or four-acre properties that are kind of scattered through our, through our community. And Fourth West is a hu, very heavily populated, it's, it's a heavy traffic zone. So it's not changing, but we're going to improve that street. If you drive along that street, a lot of these homes that are falling apart, that are agriculture, are not livable. They're not livable, livable space. So by providing eight units or maybe 12, we could give more affordable housing instead of pushing them out to areas where they're next to businesses. I don't know about you, but I've lived in Davis County since 2010 and the price of our housing is so expensive. You know, a condo is close to $400,000. Now, by me owning this lot, I can reduce the price of the land because I own it. And I can provide eight more units that will increase, one, the site, like the, the way it looks. I mean, right now, it's just a big parking lot. I have a tiny house on it and there's abandoned vehicles and falling trees. And it's a lot of work. And by improving this and building townhomes that will be resold to families, not condos, not apartments, but single-family units that people can afford and bring more families to stay here rather than living in basement apartments or falling down homes that are built in 1920 or 1960, which are super costly to, to take care of anyway. So this would bring additional property taxes, um, and nice housing for people to live in, in our community that aren't being bussed. All my kids have gone to school at Farmington and Beaumont, Taylor Elementary, um, all of the schools here. And a lot of the children that live in those condos at the movie theater have to get bussed to our schools. Where do we want our children to be living? We want them in our community where other homes are, not in the industrial park where there's commercial, like I don't want the kids playing Mike next to commercial parks. I want them to be in the neighborhood and that's where they belong. So.
Do you guys have any questions, like factual questions, based on something?
Do you have like a developer in mind you'd like to, and who is that man?
We can't ask that right now.
Oh, my apologies.
Okay. I've, I've spoken to several.
Okay.
So I've gotten quotes on that and I do have quotes to what it would cost to build all those developments.
May I ask what, like the price point of these proposed, is that in our boundaries?
So this is strictly looking at the rezone itself. It's not looking at the developments.
Okay.
So anything pertaining to the rezone, awesome, but anything outside of that?
Okay.
I can understand your way, sorry.
Um, if you say this is denied, would you resubmit for residential low, do you think?
Um, I think I'd probably try to push a little bit more for medium. I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to doing low, but I think the goal is to, uh, you know, if I do four residential lots, then I would want to add ADU units because.
Sorry, say that again.
ADU units. Um, I mean, I don't, I could probably count 15 properties in my neighborhood that rent out of basement. So again, we're not really hitting the affordability. My, my goal is to bring affordable housing to our community that doesn't impact the neighborhood. It's Fourth West. And by providing a smaller unit with less land, but still give the three to four bedrooms that can house six to, you know, six to eight people versus having a single-family home that we already know is going to price out majority of the people. We have, uh, the Davis County, what is it, the Davis County, um, there's a grant, but you have to, you have to qualify financially.
Yeah.
There's a restriction of up to $500,000. What can you afford for $500,000 in Davis County? A condo, a townhouse, or a home built prior to 1960 that needs probably $60,000 to $100,000. Who can afford that? To give you an idea, like interest rates are at 6%.
Six and a half.
Six and a half. On a $440,000 home, that's a $3,000 house payment. So you bring affordable housing, you bring townhomes that are in that 450 to 550 price range, they can use the grant, they can qualify for a home, and they can live in something that's new, that's not going to be, you know, it's not going to kill their budget. You're, you know, people already for, for Utah Housing, first-time homebuyer programs, you have to qualify. And, you know, the median income, 3,000, you're asking families to, it's a two-person household, like you have to qualify for two people. So by building four homes, these homes are not going to cost, they're not going to be affordable. They're going to be 700, 800,000. And then if you even add an ADU, they're going to rent it out. So right there, you've got eight, basically eight units already. So why not just reduce that, make eight individual units that eight individual families can own?
Thank you. Appreciate you speaking to us. Okay, so now is the time that we're going to open up the public hearing, which is probably why most of you are here. I'm just going to go over a couple of rules and reminders first. When you come up, please clearly state your name and the city in which you live. This is being recorded, so we need to be able to hear it. Also, comments must be limited to two to three minutes, three minutes max. If you're still talking at two and a half minutes, minutes, we're going to give you a warning in three minutes, you're done. We need to be respectful of other people's time. Again, we have read over every single email that came in, so thank you for taking the time. Thank you. We really appreciate your passions and your concerns and being willing to take the time to send that into staff. Um, if you have the same information and concerns as someone else that has spoken, please do not get up and say the same thing again. We have people that feel the very same way, so please be in camp, whatever that is, but not have every single person coming up. You are allowed to speak one time. Please be very respectful and please remain in your seats until you are speaking. Otherwise, keep your voices and keep your comments down as we, again, we are recording this meeting. And if you have any questions, this is not the time for commentary between us. So we, as staff or as commissioners, we will note your questions and we will address those at the end. And again, thank you for coming and the public hearing is now officially open.
My name is Dan Bills. I live in Centreville at 427 Rollin Circle, which is just six south and fourth west, so this is very close proximity. I am concerned about this rezoning because it is inconsistent with the property around it. I have made, and if anybody wants it, just email me. I have made maps off of the zoning showing that the red rectangle is where this property is. And everything around it is either agricultural low, as it is currently, or is residential low. And residential low for definition is four units per acre. Residential meeting, medium, which my house is, is six units per acre. And that's because my property is on a smaller lot. High density, or high as this is, is eight per acre. With the commission, with the exception being allowed up to 12. I do not think that this is consistent with this community. And therefore, I am concerned about it and will express my opposition to it as I have in the email that I sent already. Thank you.
James Rolletter. I live at 440 West, 600 South in Centreville, just kind of across the street from the proposed rezone. It's kind of hard to hear back there, so if you can turn up the volume, it may help. I, uh, I'm interested in what are the parameters of, um, of high-density, um, uh, rezone, like, uh, our, our high, such as setbacks from property lines, height of buildings, and how that changes if you go to a, a medium density. And, um, I, I know we need affordable housing. I've got children who'd like to live here and they can't, you know? It's too expensive. So I, I think we need to look at options. I'm wondering if, um, I know you can't answer, but I'm wondering if Centreville allows, uh, what I term teeny houses? There, I know there's a, a, a. There, I know there's a, a, a different name for it.
Tiny home.
Tiny homes, yeah. Will Centerville allow that? No, maybe, maybe we need to look at that option. I know several cities around us have done that. And I know, I would think that the proposed, the proposed, uh, zoning change is based upon, I don't know this for sure, but I would think that the existing house would have to go down, be demolished to build eight units, possibly more there. And so automatically you're losing five hundred thousand dollars in value. You've got to, you've got to go to high density to get that back. But if there was some way to leave the existing home and go to a medium density with tiny homes or some other option, uh, I think that would be good.
Howdy, I'm Julie Cahoon, I live in Centerville City. Um, the reason why we seem to keep on addressing this issue of high density in agricultural or low density area. Uh, my concerns are, um, I think one point was it does not impact the neighborhood on that particular road. Um, was it the fourth north? I don't know, you guys know, but that particular road, I mean, if we add more traffic to that area, there's gonna be concerns about possibly another, um, light that needs to be put in there. I'm concerned about parking, I'm concerned about, um, the fire lane, whether garbage trucks can get in and out. There's green space. Um, I live in Porter Walton Town Homes. I'm even concerned about the builder just because, I mean, I have to fix an electrical, electrical problem that was out of, out of, uh, code. And it's gonna cost me a pretty penny to do that because the builder cut corners. So I'm concerned about, one, making sure that, um, that as a city that we plan according to that zoning area, but then think of the possible residents that would, would live there. Would there, you know, would you be on top of each other? Would you be able to get, uh, an ambulance in and out or a fire truck if that needed to be like? I'm, I'm concerned about those pieces as well as, I mean, and yes, the neighborhood is not industrial, like what was mentioned, but still there is a road with, I mean, and so for me, I would be concerned about my kids running into that busy street. And so there's concerns about making sure that, um, that area is maybe not spot density, but it fits within the zoning area. But those are my concerns is do we have the infrastructure to, to support what is being, what is being proposed? And in my mind, I don't think we do have an infrastructure that would support that. I mean, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm Teresa Dupay, I live in Centerville. I've been here, living here for thirty-five years. I know I love how historical properties set us apart from other cities. I know I don't want our town to look like every other town with buildings that are basically stock images, high density or copies of each other. It makes more sense to have affordable housing where there are resources for it and not in places where neighborhoods are not zoned for it and where it doesn't match. I love all the historical homes in our town and it would be really sad to see them at a giant building right next to them. I know me, I love having the privacy also of my home and that would be heartbreaking to have some big building next to my house too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, my name's Dave Livingston and I actually live on the north side of the property. I have a long fence like Shereah and, um, so I think I would be impacted probably more like her than anybody here, but, uh, it, you know, like we talk, it's an agricultural, low-density area. She's got a colonial house on the corner, I don't know if it's colonial, but it's really old and it's really cool. And those three lots are agricultural. I moved from West Jordan twenty-five years ago to Centerville because of that property. Um, there's birds, there's squirrels, I've never considered that property ugly in any way, shape or form. The only time it's been run down is, um, since she's bought it. I mean, it's been, you know, a little on the verge of, um, uh, not well-kept, but it's a little farm. But nothing's happened to it since she took it over. And I'm not here to run that, that's not what I'm here to say. What I'm here to say is we love that little piece of property between our houses and around our houses. Um, I, I don't think anybody's gonna benefit. I don't really think the issue here is are we gonna create more houses for those people that can afford a five hundred thousand dollar house? I might as well, but might as well be six hundred or eight hundred thousand, you know? Unless something really changes big time. I don't think it's the area for this. It would destroy our little island of agricultural property here. It would just completely destroy it for all of us. Um, and there's some things I was gonna say, but they've already been said, so thank you.
Hi, I'm Shereah Fulton. Thank you for reading all of those letters.
You're welcome.
And for being here and listening to all of us. I think that this type of community gathering is how we create like futures together that we all believe in. Um, and that makes our, our city stronger. I also, when I was reading the general plan update, I loved how it said that you guys are committed to doing just that, listening to all of us with, "We aspire to create a city that is rooted in its past, thriving in its present and looking forward to its future." Um, "The garlic rezone proposal fails in all of those stated areas. We will be erasing our past in pursuit of a short-term goal that does not adequately plan for the future." We can plan for those in our plan, our, uh, city plan. We can account for those with infrastructure that's put in beforehand and we can prioritize resources toward affordable housing. Uh, furthermore, by moving forward with this rezone, you will not be honoring the wishes of the nearby residents. In only three days, I have collected more than forty physical signatures, um, as well as the seventy-three comments logged by, um, the, the public comments urging that this request be denied. Um, it's also worth noting that, uh, every single person who owns property bordering this, uh, this parcel is unanimously opposed to the rezone. Um, in our metro- metropolitan area, Centerville is one of the last places where we have small towns with character. Um, I, I see it as a haven with its old trees, its unique homes, its preservation of history. The reason that my neighborhood is different is because it's bordering Bountiful. Right, you know, thirteen hun- or eighteen hundred square feet, feet away, that is where the border is and that's where you can see the stark contrast. And so our neighborhood is the first greeting of the charm of Centerville. I think that that has been preserved throughout history. It says it in the general plan that the goals for the neighborhood are to provide for a sense of rural community. Uh, the garlic rezone does not provide for that. It doesn't respect the fact that there is a lot of heavy tra- she says herself that there's heavy traffic in the area. We will be impacted when right next door, there's people pulling out there. We also have tons of pedestrians in the area in a place where like there already is issues with people crossing. So I'm concerned about the pedestrian issue as well because I love all of the people that are walking, uh, with the foot traffic in my neighborhood. The proposed development would also like remove established mature trees. Um, any kind of high-density housing, as we said, this is just for the rezoning. I'm not for any kind of high-density housing in that area. These structures would be significantly taller than any others nearby, destroying our privacy and our, of our yards and our homes. The examples in the proposal do not respect the unique character of the area. It would be an eyesore that would negatively affect the quality of life and enjoyment of the neighbors' homes, which is a quote from her statement about the current property, which is not a misrepresentation of how we feel. Out, out, I outlined some other misrepresentations that were in that affidavit and some others that were made here tonight. Um, but I don't have time to go through all of those concerns. Right now, it's a time when we do need to plan for the future so we can have affordable housing for our children. High-density housing is needed, so we need to plan for that in proper locations. We can even preserve areas by having that. However, we have to, um, work together with the community, which wouldn't be happening here. None of us were talked to about this proposal. So I urge you to follow your own guidance in the city plan and preserve the designation for neighborhood two for agriculture and low-density housing. Protect Centerville for, um, generations to come. Thanks.
Please be cautious of your time when you come up.
Um, Debbie Ostrander, I live on Williams Lane in Centerville, um, fairly close to the property. One thing that hasn't been brought up is I would call scope creep. So you change density for one spot property to high density and seen it happen before, then somebody sells a property next to it and then all of a sudden they have an argument and it becomes, it's something that has to be considered in the longer term of how it can affect. It's just, it's a foot in the door and that, and that opens it up for the future. The other thing I'd say is, I have a dear friend who lives in Salt Lake City and this happened. She lives on a cul-de-sac, the back neighbors. It, they did this, uh, in a very small amount of place, they went high-density. They built, um, garage, then two more levels. Um, the neighboring properties lost the use basically of their backyard, at least the privacy of being able to go out in the backyard and not have people out on patios or, or just, it, it just changed, um, everything from privacy to, um, the property value of the neighboring homes, et cetera. So, um, have that utmost respect for what's, you know, the requests that's going in. That's, those are just some things that haven't been discussed yet.
Thank you.
Joene Jackson, um, two seventy-three Windsor Lane in Centerville. And it's in my neighborhood. First of all, I think you guys are so lucky to have that property. I would die to have something like that with the agricultural, so that's, you're lucky to have that. Anyway, um, my question is to you guys. I know that if it changes to, well, refresh my memory. If it changes to residential high, how handcuffed are you when the, you know, when plans come in that you have to honor what comes in? I mean, I know that there's certain things because if they come in with a plan and it fits into that high industrial, I mean, not industrial, that high residential plan, then you're, you're kind of handcuffed to something that, that comes in. Am I not, then, isn't that correct?
We've noted your question.
Okay, so is, that's correct then, is that?
We're not discussing at this point.
No, I know, I'm talking about the zoning, but you're, you're, you have to follow the guidelines then on the zone that you choose, right? Do you understand what I'm saying? That's right?
That's correct.
All right, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessica Moore. Um, I live over in the Porter Walton Town Homes in Centerville. Um, first I want to say how grateful I am actually for medium and high-density housing because I wouldn't be able to live in a city like this without it and afford a housing. However, um, moving, I, I think moving this property to residential is the correct move. However, moving it to high-density, I don't think is right for that area. Um, seeing the neighborhood, neighboring communities around it, I would like to see it something like lower, medium. But I do think moving it to residential, um, from agricultural to residential is the right move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea Richmond, three twenty-seven Windsor Lane. Um, my property is adjacent, um, on, it's on the border of this said rezone, as is seven other properties. And, um, I've lived there for almost forty years. That property is a beautiful property to live next to. It has not been in disrepair. Um, the entire neighborhood is residential low, agricultural and historical. And people have spent a lot of money keeping their historical beautiful homes the way that they are today. And I think it's completely, um, I mean, Shereah's house is on the red, the historical register. There's, um, the Livingston's home is right next to it and it's zoned agricultural. My home is zoned agricultural. That property is right in the middle of seven homes literally surrounding it. And I think to rezone a property in the middle of an established neighborhood to high-density is absolutely the wrong thing to do. Thank you.
Hey, my name is, uh, Daniel Pittman. I'm at six oh three south, uh, four hundred west in Centerville, so two doors down from the proposed, uh, zoning change. Um, one of my major concerns has been brought up, uh, casually throughout this, um, by many people about the, the road and how it already has heavy traffic. Um, my family has been there for decades and decades. I've been in that house all my life. That road has, it, it is very high traffic, but it has not changed since when it was low traffic. And I think it would be pretty irresponsible to increase the density of the area without examining what we were going to do to that road to accommodate higher traffic. So I think if we were to examine, um, increasing high-density housing in the area, before we do that, we have to make sure that the roads are up for it. And frankly, they are not. I mean, they're very well-maintained, but that is way more traffic than that one-lane road should be handling. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm up here first. All right, Rita Johnson, um, two eighty-nine Williams Lane. So I am in that same community that goes, I'll say, between the junior high and fourth west. I am a walker and a runner and a mountain biker. And I consider that whole area I just said, one neighborhood. So I believe that fourth west is zone two. Um, I use that sidewalk all the time. They actually, I don't know if you've been on it, the owners trim the hedge above the sidewalk like this, you can go underneath it. Kind of creates an interesting canopy, a little bit scary with spiders sometimes because I have a fear of it, but it's great. It's a wonderful route that's well-lit to run. I feel safe as a female runner doing that, but it's all the same area. Um, also running all the way down to the rec center, I do see there are areas that have um, more homes on them, but they are residential low. Duplexes specifically by Beaumont, if you see where they build the houses or like twin homes, that I believe is in, while it's a little bit higher, is still in character with the neighborhoods in that area. So that's all I wanted to bring up the point of. When you live in that neighborhood, that's the streets. You're walking through the neighborhood on those streets. My children ride their bikes to friends' houses and it is viewed as the same neighborhood. Thank you.
Dean Williams, I live below the junior high. And I've lived here longer than anybody because my family used to farm that, all that area that we're talking about. I have two issues. One is I have two children with young, or two, yeah, two children with young grandchildren of mine who both bought single-family homes in Centerville. There is affordable housing. They're not gonna buy any up by Lund Lane in the north part of Centerville where those homes are going in, but there is affordable housing available in the city. The other one, which nobody's gonna bring up, I retired after thirty-seven years in the fire department in West Valley. And every time that we got a call for a fire in a high-density neighborhood, I cringed. My daughter used to live in Eagle Mountain and they had a, it was after they moved, there was a fire in one of the high-density homes that spread to another home, burned two of them down before UFA could get there and put them out. And every time we had a fire in a high-density area, we couldn't stop it until it got into two or three units. And that's one of the reasons that the city council has said that this area is zoned as it is because of the impact on police and fire.
Thank you.
My name is Natalie Wood, I live on two seventy-eight West. Um, I would like to comment on a comment that, uh, Betty Jo made. This is not going to change the fact that students are being bused from across the way. It's, the district has the boundary, I work in a school, I've been there for twenty-plus years. It will not make an impact. It will just add more students, which is fine for the area, but it will not make a change at all to busing. One, people that don't live in Centerville that come, they're investors, they come, they do their investing, they get their money, they don't care about what they did in that neighborhood that they put this project up. Second problem is builders come in, they don't live in Centerville, they don't care about the neighborhood, they build, we heard earlier, shoddy work. One development where they've had significant problems where their homeowner dues have gone up like double because of leaky roofs, electricity, HVAC, core sprinkling systems, things like that. Insulation that's not thick enough so they hear through the walls. I think it's just a bad idea to put this project, the proposed project, in a neighborhood with, like it's been said, seven houses around this project. Thank you very much.
Hi, Robin Livingston, 515 South 400 West. I'm right next door. And I don't know if it matters, but we've got three fifty-year-old trees and most of the trunks, the limbs are on said property and so that's going to cost a lot of money. They're going to have to cut that down. And when we went in to get a proposal, it was over fifty thousand to cut those trees down. So I mean, this is going to cost us money because if they cut off, they will have to cut off those limbs, which would make the trees, with the winds we get, could fall on the townhomes or our house, which could be devastating or life-threatening to somebody. We've got three of them and then in their yard, they've got probably about twenty trees. And so I think it just takes away from the beauty and all the wild animals, such as the squirrels and so... Thank you.
Sam Newell. I live in Lehigh. Been dating Betty Jo for three years and really grown to enjoy the community. I'm also a Realtor developer. And first of all, whether it's four units, eight units, whatever it ends up being, the goal that, and I've been helping Betty Jo with the plan, that a lot of experience with this, the goal is to improve only. Improve the view, improve property values. Right now, it's very surprising to hear that it's a beautiful property because there's broken-down cars, boats, four-wheelers, rat infestation. We've hauled off dumpsters and dumpsters and dumpsters upon dumpsters of junk. So I'm only saying that to let you guys know, we are attempting to improve the property even now. So we would not cut down the trees, as you guys saw in our comments. I have worked with really bad developers in the past. I can name them, but I'd be sued. That we will, as Realtors, we will not sell their houses. We steer clear of those. I have developed with developers that have done these shoddy work, bad business practices. So whatever our goal is to do is to build really nice, as affordable as possible, housing, whether it's eight, ten, four, or two units. And that's Betty Jo's goal. We've trick-or-treat in the neighborhood. Her brother lives next door. We're not going to build shoddy work next door to her brother. He deals with the rats. He deals with the car, literally, he can see it from his second-story window. So the goal would be to improve everything, all aspects. And it would. Nice new houses will improve the resident's property value. That's just science. Fourth West is already busy. A few more cars isn't going to really affect it too much. But it's really good to hear all this because whatever ends up happening, we want it to be beneficial as possible. No one wants development in their backyard. I've been to a thousand city council meetings. Everyone wants it somewhere else. This property is a really great property. To do something nice and tasteful and anything is an improvement from where it is now. I would encourage you guys to go take a look. You're welcome to walk on the property. And I can show you pictures of how bad it was when we bought, when she bought it. So that's the goal. And again, whatever happens, the only priority we have is to improve, make it something beautiful that leaves a legacy. We have family that lives next door and she lives around the corner. So there's not going to be shoddy work. There's not going to be, it's not going to be slummy. It's not going to be a three-story tall building, two-story only. We're not going to cut down the trees. We'll plant more trees and that's it. Thank you.
My name is Ted Olson. I live at 514 Windsor Court. We have been here longer than Home Depot, Target, Walmart, Quarantine Villa. We've been here longer than the house we live in has been here. And we've watched the growth. And this gentleman who just spoke said something very good and very important, that he wanted to improve the property. The property is a nice sort. It is a, we just killed a rat in our garage. And so it's important and we value that. We value that improvement of the property. However, it's not an improvement with the higher density. If I understand it correctly, there's only one access out of that property and that would be onto Fourth West. And either way we go, whether we rezone it to high-density or to medium or low-density, you're going to increase the traffic onto Fourth West. And we've watched that traffic over the last thirty-four years get worse and worse, especially when there's a backup on High 15. Okay, you just, you just can't get out of our neighborhood when that happens because it's bumper-to-bumper traffic. So we're going to increase the traffic any way we go. And the only way to minimize that is to, is to do it in low-density residential housing. And this is, I think, a workable compromise between those of us who live here and Betty Jo and the others who want to sell that property and make some money. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Libby Dev. I'm from 281 Williams Lane. I'd just like to comment on making something beautiful and a legacy. You do not need high-density to make a property beautiful or create a legacy. I just, and I just want to comment on that because you can make it, and there's also no guarantee that the trees won't be torn down. I just don't, you cannot make those promises. This is only a rezoning, like, this is a rezoning discussion. So you can't promise on the quality. You can't promise on who's going to end up building it. You don't get to pick the builders right now. All we get to pick is the number of units and the impact on the community. And I heard recently, for per unit, an average household has about six to eight trips per unit. So that added up over time. So if you do eight, you know, times eight, like, that's a lot of trips added. So it's not always isolated. It does impact the traffic a little bit. But yeah, I just want to comment on that. There's more than one way to make your property beautiful.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Heather Strausser. I live in Shala Park, a resident of 434 South 600 West in Centerville. Thanks for serving as members of our planning commission. Your work's important and it shapes the quality of life in our city. Sorry, I'm going to take a breath. A few of the reasons I'm opposed to adopting a high-density zone in this one acre of property include the following. The parcel in question surrounded by agriculture-low or residential-low-density zones. Changing this parcel would be spot zoning at its finest. The city staff report includes several items that highlight why this requested zoning change should not be approved, including the lack of buffering between zones. I live in a residential-medium zone and I'm two blocks west of the area. It does not make sense to go medium, skip low, skip medium, go to high. There's no buffering. The general plan also states residential development along Porter Lane from Main Street West to approximately 500 West between Porter Lane and the southern city boundary. So this area that we're discussing tonight, the boundary line should be low-density, single-family residential. So we just need to follow our own city plan. Seems pretty straightforward. Putting twelve units on one acre of land does not allow for adequate green space, sidewalks, on-street parking, or a city-owned street which facilitates garbage removal and snow removal. I live across the street from Porter Walton. These are all issues that they have. And the snow gets pushed, hopefully not this year, to my side of the street where I can't see around the stop sign to get onto Porter Lane. These are things that we might not consider, but we should. As Dean has said over and over in front of the planning commission and city council, you have to think about how do you get a fire truck down that lane and turned around to save people's lives? Hopefully that will never happen. So I'm asking you to please consider the quality of life for the residents that live in this part of town. Building twelve units on one acre of land will negatively impact our quality of life. And this whole discussion about affordability isn't determined by what's built, it's determined by the market. This isn't the market that she can control, that market. So please consider that as well. I'm just asking you to please do not approve or recommend this zoning change to the city council and I appreciate your thoughtful consideration.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Give you about ten seconds to think about it.
I'm Jerry Johnson and my home address is 397 East 700 South. My husband and I chose to settle and raise our family thirty-six years ago here in Centerville. We love the feel of it here. My husband actually grew up in Centerville, so he hasn't left. But I wanted to, I didn't plan to speak, so I don't have anything prepared. I'm going to speak from my heart. We have neighbors who moved to Centerville in our neighborhood six years ago. They moved from Virginia. They chose Centerville because they heard of such wonderful things. The hometown spirit, the sense of community, how lovely it is here, how we value the heritage that we have. My son, who spent a couple of years in California, would write home and say, "How is my little town of Seaville doing?" We love that. We always call Centerville our little town of Seaville because of that. So while I understand what they're trying to accomplish, I just don't feel that this is the right place for it yet. And I think we would be doing everyone that lives around this area a disservice by rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Arthur Colton in Centerville. Seems to be a precedent that I have noticed. Whenever there is a property about an acre or acre and a half and the current owner of it cannot maintain it, either it costs too much to repair. The precedent is, an investor comes in, seeks to purchase the property, changes, seeks to change to residential high. I saw it on 522 Porter Lane. Seeing it again now, it seems to be a precedent. I think it should stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward? Give you about five more seconds to think about it.
My name is Sherri Buse and I live in 532 Windsor Court, right behind the existing property. We can see, we've got a chain-link fence and our property is the width of their property. We can see right into their property. The previous renter that was in there did a really good job maintaining the weeds and everything. They had goats back there, which we loved, and they maintained that property really well. Since he is no longer there and the person that owns it now is supposedly, sorry, is maintaining that property. It has not been maintained. I personally emailed her and asked her this summer, did she have a plan to do something with the weeds, the existing weeds? And she said, "What weeds?" And I, and I, she said, "Send me a picture." And I texted her and I sent her a picture. And she did have somebody come and take care of it one time, but they, that property, since the previous renters, I understand, were living there, it has not been maintained. And we look into that and those, there are two trailers back there and I'm assuming that she has allowed that to be on her property. She is allowing people to put things on their property. So at this point, it, you know, it, I mean, it's a very nice property, but it is not being maintained and I think that is due to the person that owns it is not maintaining it. But also, I'm not looking forward to looking into any high-density buildings in, right, literally behind us, in our property. Thank you.
I'm Dan Buse and I live at 532 Windsor Court. And my wife has preceded me. And I guess what I would like for you to do is to consider what the staff recommendation is. And those are good reasons to keep it, keep the character as it is, as opposed to wanting to rezone, rezone to residential high. Another thought, but it's kind of escaping me now. And yeah, I mean, that's kind of keeping the spirit of the neighborhood is what it would do. So I'd like for you to respectfully consider that and, you know, it's not just that the property faces 400 West. It's already been pointed out that there's seven owners adjacent to that property. So please consider that. And you know, if you really want to maintain the character of where we came from, maybe the shed, barn, whatever that other rat collector is right now, that may be something that could be considered as a historical sort of thing. And it would respect the heritage of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm... Jessica Moore. I live over in the Porter Walton Town Homes in Centerville. First, I want to say how grateful I am actually for a Home Depot, Target, Walmart, Quarantine Villa. We've been here longer than the house we live in has been here. And we've watched the growth. And this gentleman who just spoke said something very good and very important, that he wanted to improve the property. The property is a nice sort. It is a, we just killed a rat in our garage. And so it's important and we value that. We value that improvement of the property. However, it's not an improvement with the higher density. If I understand it correctly, there's only one access out of that property and that would be onto Fourth West. And either way we go, whether we rezone it to high-density or to medium or low-density, you're going to increase the traffic onto Fourth West. And we've watched that traffic over the last thirty-four years get worse and worse, especially when there's a backup on High 15. Okay, you just, you just can't get out of our neighborhood when that happens because it's bumper-to-bumper traffic. So we're going to increase the traffic any way we go. And the only way to minimize that is to, is to do it in low-density residential housing. And this is, I think, a workable compromise between those of us who live here and Betty Jo and the others who want to sell that property and make some money. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Libby Dev. I'm from 281 Williams Lane. I'd just like to comment on making something beautiful and a legacy. You do not need high-density to make a property beautiful or create a legacy. I just, and I just want to comment on that because you can make it, and there's also no guarantee that the trees won't be torn down.
All right, I'm going to make one last request. If you have an inkling of any thoughts that have not previously been shared, that you would like to share a different point of view on something, please come forward. Okay. So we are now closing the public hearing. We would like to invite Betty Jo to come back up again. You have one final chance to comment on things that were said tonight, or any concerns, comments, or questions that were asked.
I think I just want to close with-
Speak loudly, please.
Yes, I just want to close with, thank you for allowing me to come and present this crazy idea. You know, at the end of the day, I do really care about our neighborhood. I've lived here a really long time. I've lived next door to this property for eight of the 11 years I've been in this neighborhood. I do know about the issues, the trees, and the rundownness of this property. I've personally invested about $100,000 into this property, so I'm very well aware of the condition, condition it's in. And at the end of the day, I, it's, I don't, it's not about whether it's high density or low. It's about making this a better property. I do, I want to develop it. I do want to bring affordable housing to the neighborhood. I know lots of great neighbors that have adult children that live there that want to stay, and the townhome idea was to allow our younger generation to buy properties in our neighborhood. We are changing, whether we like it or not. This is a statewide problem. And I hope that we can see further down the road than just five years from now, you know, and give opportunities to younger families to stay here.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, that spoke. Now, the commission only will be discussing the merits of the request, and does the request follow the general plan of Centerville City? But first, I would like to read a reminder to everyone for clarity. Our job as a commission is not to solve or resolve. It is to make land use decisions and consider the entire city, and how codes or ordinances affect the entire city. We evaluate the effects of possible changes to code, and whether it meets our ordinances, and whether it is consistent with our general plan. That being said, it is time for our discussion as commission. And if we have any questions for staff, now is the time that we can do that as well.
Has there ever been, like, ag'd residential high before that you can recall? Just that drastic jump?
Unfortunately, we haven't been with the city as long.
Right.
But given, obviously, my short time here, I've not seen that.
Nothing you've heard of before.
In working in other communities, typically you don't see that kind of a request, I guess would say, based on my experience.
May I ask, what was the rezone for CW over here? Did they go from?
Are you talking about the hive?
Yes.
You're referencing?
Well, actually, both, if you could clarify on both. The one they have over here, just north of Hung Depot.
The high barrier was the trailer park before.
Right.
So it was already high density.
So it was already high density.
It's like RM or RM density, maybe? I don't, I don't know. I know it has a PDO currently over it.
But really-
It wasn't agricultural.
And that was more acreage as well, correct?
I mean, currently, it's, it's currently CH zone.
I think the standards-
Or RH, excuse me.
The standards of review for this are set forth in the staff report. There's four items that you're supposed to look at. Is it consistent with the general plan? Is it harmonious with the surrounding area? Are there appropriate facilities? So those are the, really, the kinds of things that you need to ask. And, and the staff report is recommending that it's not consistent with the general plan, and it's not harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood, and they're recommending denial.
Okay. And at what point, the questions that we took down that were asked tonight of some of the citizens, are we to discuss that?
It's at your discretion, honestly.
Okay.
There were a couple of questions. For most part, they were statements or comments rather than questions, right?
Right.
So, we, those were stated and heard.
Stated and heard. For example, there was the tiny homes. We do not allow that currently.
The minimum is 2,000 square feet.
2,000 square feet.
Of buildable area. So, of buildable areas.
Buildable area. Okay, so that's good to know. I'm just trying to read through, if I took down questions or statements.
There's the one about following the guidelines, right? I think we maybe answered that.
Can you say that louder?
There was just the one about following guidelines, which, obviously, we do have to do that. I think we answered that.
If the zoning were changed-
If it were changed, we would have-
Are we bound to comply with that? And the answer is yes.
Yes.
And might I note real quick on the, the tiny homes discussion? That's the buildable minimum area for a home to go on. So I don't know that that would necessarily restrict tiny homes specifically, just that the minimum footprint area would need to be 2,000 square feet of a building lot.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, there were some things that were, a lot of things that were mentioned that were noted.
There was a lot of discussion about need for affordable housing, and-
But that's not one of those.
Right, that's a general concern in society. I mean, we have a problem, obviously. This is particular to this one property. The city can address a larger issue like that. The state can address a larger issue. This is really about rezoning of this one piece of property.
Correct. And it was brought up, spot zoning. And it would be spot zoning at that point.
Yes, but, and, and the point of spot zoning, it's not illegal, but it is one of those things where you have to have a good, strong articulation as to the reasoning to justify that kind of a zoning designation.
Right.
That's the typical practice from planning circles.
Right. Well, I did look at all of the maps before. I wish we could pull up things tonight.
I'm so sorry.
But everybody knows where they live. Everybody knows what it looks like. Pictures are just super great for us.
In case you need the motions.
Thank you.
They're at the bottom.
Yeah.
Sorry, I got distracted by that, and I forgot my train of thought on that. But I have driven by that. I did drive by it again to view it, to verify. It is what we show on the maps. It is surrounded by those seven homes. The entrance would be on Fourth West. All of the facts are there. And for, for us, for discussion and debate, going from agricultural, cultural low to residential high does not make sense to me. I do not think that that fits with the general plan. I think that one acre is great for, you know, she can try and come back in again to try and residential low or, or something, but to do residential-
At this point, we, we have it.
You have it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Residential high is, is inconsistent with our general plan, and inconsistent with the area.
The neighborhood, too.
That's what I mean, the area and the neighborhood. Yeah. Correct.
And I agree with that. Just to consider the motion options, I want to understand this. If we, if we deny the request, or recommend denying, denying the request, the applicant could, could come back with an amended request, right?
It would be a, a new request. They would apply, didn't, didn't, yeah, a new, a new application request.
If they, if they wanted to come back and request residential low-
Correct.
That would be a separate request.
Correct. Alternatively, based on whatever recommendation you make, that's how it would advance to the City Council in working with the applicant, if, if they desire to move forward.
And if we were to table it, would they also have that opportunity to change it to a residential low request?
The petition is still technically active. They would have to withdraw the application at that point and still apply newly, in which case it would just be delayed. And, and I would, I would encourage that the Planning Commission make sure it's clear why the tabling is occurring, and, and give a timetable when to bring it back, or to come back.
Do you have any further questions?
I don't.
So we have one copy of this. Do you mind?
Go ahead.
Can I let you guys take a look at this for just a moment?
Other side has the motion at the bottom.
And then, I just want you to go over those real quickly, and then see if you have any questions for staff, or comments, or I reviewed all those. No?
I don't think so.
Okay. So if there are no further questions for commission, no further questions for staff, then would anyone like to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion. I hereby make a motion for the, let me start over, sorry. I hereby make a motion for the Planning Commission to recommend to City Council denial of the zoning map amendment for the property, property located at three, or 535 South 400 West, known as parcel 03-001-0076, from agricultural low AL to residential high RH zoning, based on the following findings, one through four. And no other comments.
A second.
Okay. So for the record-
And I, and might I note that item four is just to note if there's additional findings, so it would probably be, I would recommend findings one through three.
I amend mine to items one through three, with item four being no additional findings discussed by the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
A second.
So, Lane made a motion, and Matt was the second on that. Okay. So we're going to vote on it. We'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Okay, so this unanimously passed, number one to deny, motion to deny.
Just so that matter will go to the City Council, and the City Council will-
Okay.
Next progression.
So sorry.
Unless the applicant desires to withdraw, those will be the next options.
Okay, so not sure if you heard that or not. The applicant can continue forward, or she can withdraw, based on whatever you'd like to do. This, our denial recommendation will go to City Council. Is City Council having a meeting this month?
The next available meeting will be January 7th.
So, it will be in front of them in January. You're welcome to come voice your thoughts and opinions at that meeting as well. And we thank you very much for coming. We love community and citizen input. Thank you very, very much. And so this is the part of the meeting where we are done with the public hearing, so if you would like to leave, you may certainly leave. If you'd like to stay, you're welcome to stay. If you choose to go out to the lobby and discuss anything, can you please keep it down, because we're still continuing with the rest of our meeting? Thank you.
Oh, okay.
What, sorry.
It was one from Ross previously. I didn't ever see it.
Talking about what I said earlier?
Yeah.
So, where-
Different law.
Do you remember, do you remember Sophia Paulus who came in?
She's sending you hugs from the back. By your mom?
Okay, so, the next item on the agenda is the consideration, if you guys could please take it out there as quickly as possible?
Please head outside as quickly as you can, so we can continue. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is consideration of the 2025 annual Planning Commission meeting schedule, and we're going to turn the time over to staff.
Thank you, I'll take this one. This is an annual requirement. Every year we do this, where we put together a draft calendar schedule of the upcoming year. We have looked at the upcoming year. Both Cindy and I have, have covered that calendar. We've put together what we believe are the appropriate dates matching your upcoming meeting schedule. This opportunity for you to look at. If you see any concerns, please let us know. Otherwise, what we would request is that you consider it, discuss if necessary, and then make appropriate motion, so that we can move forward in posting it and, and making it official. So, at this point, it's drafted, unless you give us approval on it, and then we move forward and posting it.
So, I didn't see that. Did you send that?
It was in the packet.
I don't know, I didn't, I don't know how I missed it.
Yeah, I looked at it.
Okay.
I thought it was pretty straightforward.
Sydney posted.
I'm teasing.
Ding!
It's that one.
You can pass that down if, if you want to look at it, right?
It's at the very end.
No, I did not see this.
I guess, no, I think it was an attachment on the, you know.
So the two in January, and the two in February.
No, I think like the, I guess it's coming down.
Yeah. We usually, yeah, skip a July, and then no best last one this month.
We haven't skipped any July, because there were no major holidays associated. So there's no Fourth and no 24th.
So-
You can cancel meetings. We, we, we put it on there that these are regularly scheduled, but if we don't have items, or if there's holidays, or we don't have a quorum, you can always cancel.
So in July, does the 23rd fall on like the 24th? Like, is it going to fall on a weekend? Are people going to be gone?
24th would be a Thursday, so-
So, no.
Yeah, a lot likely.
Probably not.
As we looked at the calendar, it didn't seem to be a conflict.
Yeah. 23rd, yeah.
We just have one, and it'll be on that one in December.
Like, that's the normal behavior.
Do you guys have any questions about that, the calendar? So, and again, we won't have meetings if there's nothing.
I don't know what I'm doing next week, so.
Yeah.
Sounds great. And this is our, our next meeting, January 7th.
Still, it's for the whole 2025 year.
Eight.
Yeah, January 8th will be your next meeting.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So we don't need any discussion on that? Is that, is this what we're to vote on?
Yeah, we just need a motion to prove it.
Okay, anybody like a question?
I make a motion to pass the agenda for 2025?
I will second it. Let's vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next thing on the agenda is the presentation of the new Centerville City branding. So we're going to turn the time over to Bryce King.
Yep, great. Super easy, without the TVs.
Yeah, yeah.
Bryce, we love our glasses and our stickers.
Yeah, the glasses are great. Had my ice water in it.
One second to set up here.
Ice watering.
Always. I wish you could see it on that front. Let me see if I can.
Well, we're not going to let you time out, so you're fine. You're good. What? You have some magic.
Magic. That's why they pay me the big bucks.
Good thing somebody is. Can you hold on one for one sec till Lane comes back? And can I give you this?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Do you want that for everything?
I don't know.
I mean, we won't do everything upfront right now, but like, all the, all the commissions and stuff are going to get a polo for sure. Can you turn me down just a titch?
Yeah, I sure can. I would assume, but do you have something to look at?
Yeah, I will send something out. It'll be like an Ojo polo, and then an Ojo quarter zip. So, yeah. Just send it out.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Men's and women's styles.
Yeah, men's and women's.
Yeah, so we had to put our sizes. Did you do the sizes yet?
I just did that right there on that sticky note.
Old school, she just goes down sticky note.
Like, there you go.
Like, in the actual Excel spreadsheet?
Thank you, thank you.
I was all about this. I did not want to get the app. Thank you very much.
That's a girl.
Well, thank you for letting me have some time tonight to present to you about our new branding effort that we've officially adopted into the city a couple weeks ago in our City Council meeting, a couple weeks. Anyways, I just wanted to kind of go through the style guide and just kind of show you the process of kind of how things have evolved. As you can see on the, the branding style guide, this is the new logo. We're all pretty excited about this. This is a two-year process, almost, getting to this point, so super excited to start rolling this out and sharing it with the community. Yes, ma'am.
So, that's a good point, that says eighteen forty-seven and our other one says eighteen forty-eight.
We did the historical documentation, it's really eighteen forty-seven.
Perfect, and it looks great.
Confirmed, yes.
Yep, thank you.
I have the documents to prove it, so if you have somebody that wants to know the ad, so. Anyways, in this logo, hopefully some things kind of stand out too. Obviously, we kind of, you can see the old one here on the left, or you did?
Not anymore.
Change it on me? Okay.
I didn't mean to, did I? It's gone.
It's all gone.
We've kind of got rid of.
It's okay, just look at your cuss gone.
We remember it.
Kind of gotten rid of the traditional city part of the logo, we've kind of gone to the more standout Centreville name, really trying to recognize people that this is Utah as well. In the logo itself, you can kind of see this subtle arc, which is actually a C standing for Centreville.
Oh.
The sun was really representative in a lot of the discussions we had, to bring joy and brightness and light and outdoors. Those were some really big topics when we did our focus groups. The sun focuses on recreation and those types of things. These triangle pieces here represent a lot of different things, still to be determined. But we are looking at these also as representing the Four Creeks in town, for founding families, for values, lots of different things. But that's kind of in its infancy and we're moving forward with some other things and getting to that point.
I like it.
So as we roll through the logo, you can start to see that we've established a couple of different new taglines. So, this new tagline of meet us in the middle is kind of taking the place of friendly city by the Great Salt Lake. This is our new tagline, meet us in the middle.
Meet us in the middle, because we're Centreville.
Centreville.
I like it.
It also emphasizes collaboration amongst citizens, amongst the community, friends, family, things like that.
Yeah.
This kind of talks about the process, why we chose it, the brand personality, brand promises. This will be available, I'll send it out to you as well, but I don't want to take a lot of your time, but. We wanted to kind of have this idea of formal but friendly, and that's kind of. Concept, other commonly used phrases were find your center, in between everything, in the middle of everywhere, life's better at the center, right-sized, at the center of everything, life's better at the center, sounds like a candy bar commercial from back in the day, so. Yeah, so, that's kind of where we're at. We're trying to use more phrases like we and us and are instead of some of the typical ones like the council, the mayor, or the city. These are kind of the terminologies we'll start using in the future. What else? Logo and seal, this is the new seal, I don't know if you probably haven't seen this, but this is kind of the new seal that we'll be using for a lot of different things. We wanted to use different logos in different spaces. This logo you see on the left is the primary logo, it's what you'll see most of the time. There'll be a rare occasion where you'll see a horizontal logo. For instance, you'll see a horizontal logo on a pen, or you'll see a horizontal logo on the back tailgate of a city truck. Anything where there's a horizontal readable view is when you're gonna see the horizontal logo, but about ninety percent of the time, you're gonna see our traditional logo here on the left.
A question, on that logo, is it a eye trick? Or is the word Centreville, are the letters shorter in the middle and taller at the ends?
Yes.
Not just me?
Oh, it's like arced.
It's subtle, but yeah.
Light arced.
Oh my, that is a good.
Yeah, I mean, was there significance to that, or was just someone thought it looked?
We went through lots of different typographies and texts, the council really liked this flow and how it read, and so that was kind of the idea behind why we chose that instead of just going straight across or any other kind of font, that's been a way.
I like it.
It draws your eye to the middle.
It does, the center, right?
With the Utah centered below it, I think it works too.
So this is where we start talking about either four rivers or agricultural furrows or centrality, mountain sunrise, optimistic look, growth, and then this is a blue sky, community connection, or that H. We have started to use the C in a lot of different things previous to this logo, like the baseball program uses the C in their logo and things like that. So, we wanted to keep the C in a subtle way, but not like here it is, and so it kind of represents that, so. These are just more different kinds of logos and different types of faces and things like that. Like I said, a lot of this, you probably won't see on a regular basis because we'll be using the full color logo as much as possible. Something we did talk about, and this is something that we'll still be debating, but we did create logos for all the different departments, and you can see Planning Commissions are on the right. The challenge with something like this is that, you know, when do I use this logo and when do I not? And so, we really are trying to just focus on using the city logo as itself. The only time we've talked about using these individual logos like that you see on the right is in an email. So if you got an email from Sydney, it would say, Centreville Community Development. That's about the only time we're thinking about using these specialized logos. Even on our business cards and things like that, you're gonna see just a regular logo, so. Here's all of our colors and our pantones and all that kind of stuff, you probably don't care about that. Main headlines, it's different, the fonts, this is gonna come into play really significant when we start redesigning the website. We're trying to keep our logo fonts similar to what we do on the website, so that, you know, main headings and subheads go in line with our logo, and so it kind of all flows together, so.
Is the company who you hired to do this, do they help with the website as well?
Different company. So we are in a redesign. Now the logo's done, we can move forward, but it's about a six to seven month build out for the new website, so, probably fall. Then we start getting into like patterns, you saw some of these at the Christmas party on Monday, on the back of the posters. This is something you would see like in a backdrop or in like a standing freestanding backdrop for like a picture or something like that, in an event space, wallpaper, we talked about tissue paper, we talked about packaging, a lot of different things is what you would see this pattern. This orange pattern you see here will actually be on the back of all our business cards in the future, and so that will be the backdrop for that. The only time that you ever will see the logo broken out is in this specific logo. And so, that's why you see just the sun here. We played around with a lot of different scenarios, but we felt like this is what tied it all in together, with the triangles on the right and the left, and then the different points kind of keep the logo tied in together, so. Something we will struggle with is branding consistency. We're already nicknamed the branding police, and so people will, hopefully in, as it gets implemented, start to see the consistency and why it's so important to keep the brand and our identity the same across all of our city avenues. These are just some examples of potential swag items that we're looking into.
But you're looking at different colors rather than just that. Orange.
We've already done some white t-shirts with the logo.
You know I have an opinion, I will not wear that.
You don't like going.
No, it's not any of our colors right here.
We just did some.
The new black.
No, no, one next to your face.
We just did black hoodies for the youth council, we just did a lighter teal, blue shirt for youth council.
Baby blue would be cool.
These are just some other representations of what you could potentially see in the community, the bags or.
That is great.
Advertisements or, our city truck logos will be a little bit smaller than that, probably the size of where the logo is. This is a component that we're working on for City Hall, so that when you come in the building, this will be something that would be on a wall space to kind of welcome you into the building. Trying to create more of an inviting atmosphere in this building as it kind of ages with time, so. That is kind of the end.
So why are you doing all the rebranding?
Why?
Exactly, yeah.
We felt like it was very significant to do during the same time we were doing the general plan, so that we can identify who we are and kind of all the different components of what the citizens want. We took our branding survey data and we took it to planning, or to the general plan guys, and they said, well, gosh, we're already eight years ahead because we already have all the data of what people want, what people like with the community. We also started to have different departments create different brands, like I said, Rec had a logo, Public Works has a logo, Police Department has a logo, and so we wanted to kind of centralize all the content and the culture in the city into one logo, one idea, one concept, and that's just kind of why it came to fruition. This is my third logo rebrand for a city I've worked for, so it is always challenging, so.
You did a great job.
Yeah.
I liked it a lot.
So thank you, any questions?
Yes, I have some questions for you, but it's kind of, it's in the same family.
Okay, well, my attorney will tell me if it's not.
You know, I think she will, and I think she'll tell me also, but it's regarding the master plan and getting that information, more information to the citizens.
Yeah.
So, we had talked at our last meeting about possibly having you send out a letter, and I know you went to surgery, I don't know if you even heard about it, but sending out a specific letter that's mailed to every single citizen with the QR code on it, so that they can go in and take the survey and know about it, so.
So that's just, there's just a cost, it's a cost thing.
But we have the money, don't we?
I'd have to look at what the budget is for the general plan, I don't think.
Let's decide how it's spent, right?
Not the general plan, the general plan's gonna be tapped out.
No, not the general plan, but in the city budget.
If it's not budgeted.
It's not budgeted for that specific purpose, it's budgeted for one newsletter to go out once a year, and that's typically around the Fourth of July. That's what the money's budgeted for, so.
They can budget for it, though.
Well.
But that would be a city decision, so.
But can they budget for it in the month of December? Because, is his name Chris, the general plan guy? From what I understood, that he told me at the city lighting, you know, the tree lighting, was that we had the month of December to get citizen input.
I actually have an update for you that all expressed or all shared the community.
Because in the month of January, we were getting all together as commissioners.
Because there's been a change, there's a new event coming up, so I'll talk about that, community development report on the general plan.
So, okay, so then there's an opportunity.
Which will delay, which will delay the assimilation of all the information because of that event.
And allow the citizens another opportunity, okay. So also, when you're on the plan, I just texted a bunch of people and I said, go to the city website, and they're like, well, where? I said, no, go to the city website and find blah, 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 right? Most of them could not find the link to the survey.
I'm not sure where else to put it, but they can't find.
Hey, show me where.
So, two places, right on the main line page.
The Centreville City.
Centreville General Plan Updates, Centreville General Plan Information. When you Google search, or when you search within here, like if we type in general plan, the first thing that pops up is general plan. Right there at the top, click here to submit feedback for the general plan, click on it, takes you right to the page.
Survey starts, okay, so how.
Who are these people, elderly?
I live in an established neighborhood.
So this is something I've done, this is recent, so.
It is so.
There was some feedback from council meeting a couple of weeks ago. Immediately after council meeting, I updated all these links and made them a lot more prominent.
Perfect.
On the web page. We've also released quite a bit of social media stuff as well.
Where?
On our Facebook page.
Because I see there are lots of Centreville Facebook page, I know not official, but there are lots that are out there, and people are saying, we don't know anything about it, where's the information?
And Chris has been at three events now in the community, you know, if they were attending the events.
I just think it would be, what I would really encourage people you talk to is to follow the Centreville City Utah page. That's where the official city business takes place, and.
Is that Centreville City comma Utah?
Centreville.
Centreville Utah is the tagline at the top, so if you put in Facebook Centreville Utah, it'll go right to our page.
But what is the page exactly called, is it called Centreville City Utah?
Nope, Centreville Utah.
Okay.
So, facebook.com/centrevilleutah.
Okay.
And it will go directly to our main page. I can pin this right now, so it goes to the very top.
Yes, can you?
It was the third item down, but now it's in the featured column, so it should be pretty easy to find.
Okay. That would be really helpful.
We are paying for ads for that as well, we're boosting it as well on the backend, so it is going out to more people.
The backend of what?
So Facebook, so in Facebook you can boost ads, so we can specifically target people within a certain geographical area or demographic.
And so we are paying for those ads in addition to just plain posting.
I haven't seen any, I mean, like, none have come to me.
Something that, and here's another educational piece.
I don't think I follow this page.
Yeah. So here's just some Facebook knowledge. When you go to your regular Facebook page.
You need the new logo.
Well, that's a separate page.
Got it.
So, I'm logged in as Bryce Coordinator is how I access our page, just long story short. Up here in the top right, it says that I'm following this page, but if I click on it and I add it to my favorites, and I update, it will show up in your algorithm better.
No, thank you for showing me that, yes, I will share that information.
And I thought the website, just the city website was pretty clear, it's right there at the top, so.
I, I know, I had eight people, literally.
It is right, we also put it on Instagram.
But that was about, maybe, maybe a month ago, so I don't know if it's more clear now?
Like I said, a lot of these changes just happened in the last couple of weeks, because I hadn't gotten any feedback from anybody. So, the same thing that I told councils, so as you're planning commission, if you're getting chatter from the community about something that we're not having accessible, just shoot me a text or an email and say, hey, look, we're getting a lot of chatter about X, then we can create content. We're really not, we're only looking for content, we're not, we are not allowed to look at other pages or pull content from other pages, and so if you guys just hear things, or if you're on places or in the community or whatnot, then just email me and say, hey, could you do a post about X? Because we're getting chatter about it, we'll do it.
Okay, perfect, good to know, okay. All right, that's the only thing that I wanted to discuss, do you guys have any questions?
Yeah. I know you're going on your report, but this is the ad that's going out that Mike will talk about, but this is that event he's talking about.
That's what I was gonna talk about.
As you can see, it kind of mimics our other feedback posts. This one has a QR code, but because this one's an in-person event, we took the QR code out, so people will start to see the relation between the two different events and how they tie together. And so that's gonna be in January from six to eight, but I'll let Mike talk more about.
Thank you.
Kind of the buildup to that.
Yeah.
So, any other questions?
No, thank you so much.
You did awesome.
Yeah, it's great.
Thank you.
Love it.
Appreciate your time.
Oh, we appreciate yours.
Thanks for sharing it.
Thank you. Okay, so item number five was the Planning Commission holiday business, but we're removing this from the agenda because it was an informal item, and it's something that we kind of already did, swapping some things. And so now we're gonna turn the time over to Mike.
Yeah, so, thank you, Commissioner Patterson. So the first thing we will talk about is, we do have scheduled on January thirtieth from six to eight PM, a general plan open house. It'll be, it'll, Chris Huff will come, we will be here as staff, myself and Sydney, I guess whoever else to answer questions and help explain what's going on with that. And so, plan that, we will have a, I guess you'd say, soft advertising push or representation as well, starting on the twenty-first. We will have poster boards and imagery set up in the lobby and links to the survey and other guidance, so individuals, if they're just walking around the lobby, will also see that, and there'll be a clear advertisement for this event as well. So kind of a week and a half long promotional period up to that night, so that there's even more, so.
That's six PM or seven?
From six to eight PM, yeah.
And thank you for doing this.
Yeah.
I think it really needs to be.
Yeah, and also to that, there will also be, so if individuals don't feel. Yeah, and, and also to that, there will also be, so if individuals don't feel like, not everybody's technologically savvy and we understand that. There will also be forms that can be filled out that will be the actual survey in paper format, and then they'll just need to deliver it to the front counter staff who will collect that. So, that will also be available during that period of time.
And this-
This is also something that is gonna be available, um, the week leading up to it, so it will be in the lobby and then they'll be able to fill it out.
I think we could just even have a box.
I asked Chris about that, he's a little, he was a little concerned, he seemed to think it'd be better if someone from staff had it. If you think there's a way to secure, I don't know, I, I'm with you Bryce, I kinda didn't see what the concern was, but he seemed a little concerned.
Doesn't seem like it's a security issue.
People don't know Centreville.
We're just, uh, we'll have some sort of drop box, I think that'd be easier than trying to test your staff.
Yeah, and I, that's kinda where I was at.
And we can play by ear, if it's a huge issue, then we can try to figure out, but I think-
When he comes in on twenty-first, certainly, year nine, he could-
I think there's a way we can do it.
Yeah, that's where I kinda was.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then with following that, the other thing is, already with the new year, we have to start thinking about this. We'll be going pretty quickly into legislative session with the state legislature, which is always exciting and challenging, so as- Yeah.
Maybe challenging, okay.
And so, February will be pretty, pretty interesting. Both Lisa and I attend Legislative Policy Committee, which is guided by the Utah League of Cities and Towns. Where we all get together and hear the latest rumblings. So, we'll try to communicate in our planning commission meetings during that time period, what's being discussed, where we feel like it's appropriate. And then clearly, we'll give you an update after the fact in March and April after the fallout. So, um, it, there could be fallout, so we'll see how that plays out. One of the, there's a few big topics, they're still talking about housing, just like some of the conversations we've had today. State legislature is gonna hone in even deeper into that. Um, some of the things that we're hearing, um, one of the biggest topics that's being discussed right now is parking. And making sure cities don't over-regulate parking standards, so that could be something that we may have to look at, see if it adjusts codes. We've heard maybe some more discussion about, um, ADUs and if, if cities have to, uh, allow for external ADUs. That's one of the things that's being discussed a little bit, as well as internal and, uh, other, again, um, even reporting standards. And even, um, expectations of like regional housing project development and goals to accommodate that. So, there are some things that are being honed in on, but we'll keep you updated. I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I'm not trying to fear monger as much as inform, right? We don't know exactly how it'll play out, but that's some of the things that have been discussed, so. But with that, that's, that's all I had, had planned to discuss as part of the report, and just, I guess, from us to you, we wish you all a Merry Christmas as well.
Thank you, and you guys are as well, you're awesome. Thank you, all of you for doing such great jobs and, and helping us so that we can do the best that we can do.
Yeah.
I did wanna say on that, uh, that rezoning issue, I, I was very impressed with the staff report. The recommendations were, you know, very clear points laid out, and it made it very easy for us to kind of, you know, read through that and understand, you know.
Thanks, you guys.
Great, great work.
Clear and concise, we, we love that. I did have one question, you just mentioned parking.
Yeah.
So, I should've asked while the officer was here, um, and I don't know who, I don't know if this is us or city council or if it's just police department. Is there any way to look at that parking in the winter where they say there's no parking and they go around and they tick it all the time, but they tick it when there's not even a snowstorm?
I, I mean, I kinda, I think that is a plea, more of a police discussion function where it's public safety and welfare. I don't know, Lisa, do you have any thoughts?
I think you can bring it up with the city manager if you'd like.
Brent?
Yeah, it's not really a planning commission issue.
Right, well, I just didn't know who that would go to, so Brent.
Yeah, we, we've talked about that ordinance multiple years in a row. Um, so, it is a combination of the Public Works Department with the streets who don't want the cars there because they hit them.
Oh, for sure.
And the police who have issued the ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
We've talked about going to, uh, only if it snows like North Salt Lake, but it hasn't passed.
Okay, okay, all right.
So many people, I didn't know this was gonna show.
Oh, true, but-
We've actually been taken to once when it wasn't snowing.
Uh, not as long.
Do you have minutes on your agenda?
Uh, yeah, I do next.
Okay.
So, the next item on our agenda, Lisa.
Well, I thought you were wrapping up.
Minutes review and approval consideration for November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Did everybody happen to look at those? I looked at them. They looked fine, I didn't have any changes.
I didn't have any comments.
Okay, I will make a motion to accept those.
I can get a motion?
Okay, and, um, then I would like to accept a motion to close the meeting.
Oh, wait.
Hold on.
Get a vote, get a vote on the minutes.
Oh, aye. We can unanimously-
All in favor.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All in favor to dismiss.
Is there a motion to close the meeting?
You did so well.
I did so well today.
You did amazing.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close.
I'll second. Okay, everyone vote?
Aye.
All right, meeting is officially- Meeting is officially closed at nine oh seven.
Whoa, I was not expecting that.
You wanted to hear that?
All night long, baby, all night long.
You did an awesome job.
Yeah, you did a good job.
Yeah, really good.
Come point, good job. Thank you for your-
We appreciate you coming, yes, thank you.
And now-
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to everybody.
I told my kids.
I will be back.
Yes, January eighth.
Oh, yeah.
So, be patient with staff, cause we have back-to-back meetings and-